Yes, sir. All right. All right. Call me in a while if everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, Madam Auditor.
Okay, Councilman Reva.
Here.
Councilman Grant.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Larson.
Here.
Councilman Paparazzi.
Here.
Councilman Stinn.
Here.
And Councilman Ritten.
I'm here.
Justice here.
All right, we've got minutes in front of us, approval of council minutes from April 28th, 2020.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First reading, Madam Auditor.
Nurse Texas, the proposed additional appropriations, nurse's gift by giving the Texas to Porter County, Indiana, that the property go off to the Porter County, or main Porter County administration building, located 155 Indiana Avenue, Albury Road, on May 23rd, 2020, at 5:30 PM, considered the following appropriations, adjustments pending this year 2020, in the terms of any further business, which might come before the county stormwater fund, or 182. The community property assessed bonus of $2,006.80. The Texas appearing as such an unit shall have the right to enter on the appropriations adjustments, the final main will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government finance, after 12, the DLGF will make a break in the termination as petition, the funds support the appropriations made with 15 years of the year fact category, standing up for Madam Auditor, according to them, on which may 15, 2020.
All right, thank you. So, we're going with something that's been on the agenda for pre-COVID. Don, you've got a couple of additionals that we've kind of pushed off, and you've worked with us, pushed them off. Anybody got any questions? I know you guys had information on it. This is just stuff down at the jail. Looks like... You got any questions for Don?
Yep.
On these two?
How many motions on both are approved?
Oh, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? We have a roll call on the two additionals, $60,000, $60,655, and $40,000. The roll call.
Councilman Grant.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Paparazzi.
Yes.
Councilman Stinn.
Yes.
Councilman Ritten.
Yes.
Councilman Reva.
Yes.
Seven zero.
I'm gonna miss talking to you about these additionals.
Yeah, I know, it's been a long three months.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Don, have a good night.
You guys don't mind, go out of order here a little bit, and we've got this joint resolution with the commissioners that was born out of a meeting, and Scott's gotta run, put out a fire somewhere, so, hm, and we asked Scott to be here and maybe discuss this resolution, joint resolution with the commissioners, if anybody's got any questions. Everybody had a chance to read it, review it, understand.
All right, and Harold has also reviewed this and saw it.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution by title only.
So, I have the motion to approve the resolution by title only in a second. You guys know, just kind of lays out what went on over the last couple of months, what we've done with the county, and then kind of sets forth some financial measures, you know, in cooperation with the commissioners, hiring freeze, overtime, comp time ban, real strict protocol on any kind of additionals to the general fund, just kind of preparing our county moving forward, so...
And it also allows the inter-fund borrowing for the auditor.
Yes, thank you. As we expect some cash flow issues in the near future, with people having the 60-day window to not pay property taxes and not be penalized for it, so, yes, I spoke with Harold today, he had some things come up, but he did review it, so... The motion is second on the floor, any further discussion?
Attorney McLeure, if you could just, a question that I've been asked, talking about the testing, the mandatory testing for all employees, can you just give us an idea where we're at with, has everyone been tested and what those results were, or any...
Yeah, today was the final day of testing, I think we did another 60-ish today to round it out, I believe that takes care of all of our departments, and even some of our sub-departments, so, those results will be in a day or two. I think at this point, with the results we've received, we're at somewhere around three or four positive results, the rest were negative, so it was good news on that front.
So, in the course of how many days, that was two weeks roughly?
It was basically a Friday to Friday, so, basically a week plus today.
What's the percentage?
Oh, three or four out of seven or eight hundred?
Yeah. That's good, and there's 14 days quarantine, and...
Yep, the ones that were positive, correct.
Okay.
There's a couple of questions. How do we keep the other ones separated that were already tested? What stopped them from getting infected as soon as they were tested? And what did this cost the county?
Well, if you walked out and got infected immediately after the test, nothing would stop it. The point of it was to be able to attempt to give the employees an opportunity to be able to come in knowing, back to full staff, which they are today, without having an asymptomatic that's working with you, that unknowingly is asymptomatic, therefore isn't violating anything, and doesn't know it, and just happens to pass it to everyone around within the workplace. That was the point of it. The total cost is, I haven't got a final tally, the good thing is, is that it will be reimbursed through the CARES Act, that the state has right now, so...
So, do we have a cost per test? Do we know what that cost was?
It was $100 per test, plus the nurse was in by hour, so it depended by day exactly how long the nurses stood out there.
Yeah, the only thing I was asking Scott was, is if we were coming back in waves, were we isolating the people that were back?
We didn't come, we came back all today.
Yeah, but we tested, we kind of tested in waves, right? We didn't test everyone.
We tested every day for seven days.
Right, so, percentage of those people that were coming in were getting tested, I'm saying, did they all get tested when they came back together, or did they test in each, every day, a certain percentage of those people that returned to work were getting tested?
We tested about 90 a day until they were all tested.
That was my question.
So, I think what he's asking is, and I could be wrong, but as they were getting tested, is that determining when they came back to work? But you're saying...
Yeah, at that point in time, as soon as they're, like, when the juvenile center was complete, they all could return, and that's what, you know, the leadership of that then did that, and they went around by department at that point to be able to bring their staff in full.
What company was doing the testing?
Franciscan, and then Franciscan utilized Great Lakes.
Then, I would, Attorney McLeure, with the funding, the CARES Act and the FEMA funding, and I'm sure we're aggressively putting that information together, and I know there's a certain amount that the county was granted or allocated based on that, so... Is it through Vicki's office or the commissioner's office that we're aggressively making sure we get reimbursed for what we need to get reimbursed for?
All right, both offices are working right now, there's been several meetings, and Vicki's been, I believe, part of some of the planning meetings with the actual state that's running the program through the feds, so, yes, we're...
Which is really great news.
Wonderful news.
So, yeah, Vicki, I know she's very involved in that, I think she may chair a committee. No?
No. This is a committee that was formed by the AFC, and it is, it was focused specifically on a portion of the CARES Act that's going to be administered through the state OMB program, agency, and this is that 5.5 million that Ford County government has been eligible to receive. Now, there's other grants that mentioned, there's FEMA grants that are available, there's a criminal justice institute grant that's being pursued, pretty aggressive, but the committee that I was on focuses on the CARES Act, which is going to be focused more on this direct reclaiming reimbursement, not like a grant application, that's what we think that the testing might be able to get reimbursed for.
Okay. All right.
Scott, I got one question. On the positive cases, were they surprised, I mean, they had, did they have symptoms, or was...
They had no.
They had no way of knowing?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
I had one other thing. Did we, this was a pretty large contract with them, was there any other bidder? Did we put this out, or did we just make that choice that we were gonna use that as a source?
No, the choice was simple, it was Franciscan, it was a call to GIS, our insurance agent, what's the best way to maybe test 800 people, back when nobody had any tests? They then, we talked about different scenarios, including doing it ourselves if we could locate the tests. We were unable to locate the tests, that's why the health department was never even approached to maybe administer the tests. Since we had a contract with the Franciscan group through our clinic contract, we then basically told Franciscan, find tests. They called everyone that was available, their source and every other source, including the testing resource that's in the accounts, they declined, and nobody else had any tests, so, Great Lakes had the tests, and that's where Franciscan got them from.
And Franciscan, we have a relationship, partnership with them.
We have a continued, they're the ones doing our clinic contract for the employees, which is why it was able to get set up as quickly as it was and ran through, as quickly as it did.
And we were looking at, we tried to utilize the tests that were offered for free, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, but the testing is complicated, the test, there was a logic behind the reason why you needed to be symptomatic, or have other reasons to take some of the tests, because of the sensitivity of those tests, and whether or not they would show that, and so, there's not only the issue of available tests, the quality of the available tests, the volume of those tests, and the time in which it takes to get them back from the lab. So, when you put all those things together, there's just not a whole lot of options at that point in time.
Do we know what the accuracy in this test is, what percentage?
Uh, I don't know the exact percentage, no. Highly reliable, though.
We could ask our representative of Great Lakes to come.
Sure.
Who would that be, Dan?
All right, so, is there any, there's a...
Moving on.
Yeah, I would just like to say, from, you know, in light of the situation that we've been through, the collaboration and cooperation among the different departments as directed through, as directed through the commissioner's office, and I'm talking about the calls, and what EMA has done, and what the health department has done, I think they've done a terrific job in terms of making sure that from a county perspective, the county employees and all the departments are being handled properly. So, I congratulate, you know, the effort, and it's been an unknown, unprecedented sort of time, and I've been very pleased with the different departments and how they've handled the situation, so hats off to them.
I would second that completely, I've been in on several of the weekly calls, bi-weekly, and just really very professionally well-done.
All right, there's no further discussion. Can we get a roll call on the joint resolution?
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Paparazzi.
Yes.
Councilman Stinn. Yes.
Councilman Ritten.
Yes.
Councilman Reva.
Yes.
And Councilman Grant.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott.
Have a good night.
Thanks, sir.
All right, development and stormwater management. There's an additional...
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the $85,000, $65,000, and six additional.
Second.
To pay for 19 property taxes for flood-prone properties purchased by stormwater department 2019. Motion and a second on the floor for the additional. Further discussion? We have a roll call?
Councilman Larson.
Yes.
Councilman Paparazzi.
Yes.
Councilman Stinn.
Yes.
Councilman Ritten.
Yes.
Councilman Reva.
Yes.
Councilman Grant.
Yes.
And Councilman Jackson.
Yes. Do you coordinate every day?
I do, I try.
It makes his eyes...
It's not the right word. It's not the right word. Orange high-top Converse, but I didn't wear those.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Jail.
I'll make a motion to approve the $85,000 order transfer.
No, there was a, there was a correction also.
Yes, and a correction.
Hold on, so, slow down there. Yeah.
The $500 is to avoid here.
There was a correction to, E, they only need, you guys only needed the $62,125.
I made my motion at all. Second amendment.
So, the first and the second agreed to amend their motions to $62,125 from food and groceries to other equipment, and that's to purchase the Skytron UV light system.
Well, we changed, we changed the company. I sent a change out.
American Ultraviolet.
Yeah, American Ultraviolet.
American Ultraviolet.
Yeah, and I can explain a little bit, because you were asking before the meeting, the reason why, you know, we put in, we got that company, they educated us, we felt it was good, we put it in for the meeting, but then we started doing due diligence to see, because they were awfully expensive, and we wanted to see what else was out there. We found another company, the units are the same size, they do the same job, the differences, the other expensive ones were very software-based, digitalized, you know, just way overkill. We found this company who has only done for hospitals, they have never done for jails, and they were cheaper because of the software. We were able to get a lot more units, cheaper, we saved over $18,000. We got three hand wands for cars, we got the five units. Now, the same thing with the other ones, we would've had to put the two units in one pod, at least, we'd have to do it like four times, so, now it cuts it down to putting them four in, at 15 minutes, they're done. We can now go into all parts of the jail multiple times, because these are also for, you know, kills viruses, moles, and bedbugs, so it's a good thing, and we're gonna be able to do the building, the administration side, our gym, all that kind with as many units as we have.
You have a gym?
The gym, too, we can stick it in the gym.
Membership over there?
No, no, you gotta be a... Gotta have that badge. Gotta have that badge. Anyway, so, we just did due diligence to find a better, you know, and we don't need all those bells and whistles, that thing turned itself on, turned itself off, this one's just a safe, they kind of push safety on that one, this one has all the safety features, if it senses motion, it stops, it gives you a timer to get out of the unit, you know, and there was just a lot, the other one was a little bit of a, I mean, they were good, I'm sure, but they were kind of jumped on a bandwagon of almost, you know, scaring people, I think. This one, we reached out to, and they do all hospitals, they do, that's where they came from, they didn't even know how to deal with county people. How big are these things? Um, well, they're... Are they handheld, or are they in a car? No, no, well, we have three or four handheld ones that will go in the cars and be able to clean the cars. These other units are too big, I mean, you could put a car by it and stick the door open, and it could've done the job, too, but it's, they're pretty good size. I haven't physically seen one, I did send out an email with the pictures of the new one, and the other one that I sent showed a big, huge one in their brochure, that wasn't the model we were buying, that was way too expensive, it's the same size as what we're getting now. That one would record every time it hit, did something, now when we do it, we're just gonna hand-record it, paper. No sense in wasting that kind of money when we could use so many more units and get so much more clean. Thank you.
All right, any further questions?
Is this eligible for reimbursement grants?
Yes, we're working on that. We are doing that also.
Thank you.
Putting that into the grant, or into the reimbursement.
All right, so, there's a motion and a second on the floor for the $62,125. Further discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, E, have a good evening.
E911. State surcharge fund is a transfer of $30,000 from overtime hourly to cover part-time hourly costs for the remainder of the year. There's a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion?
Good evening.
How are you?
So far, so good.
Everything going good?
Moving along, everything's going well so far.
Good. Any, any discussion?
Tony, how many part-time folk, is it just three that you have?
Three, now, when I started last year, we had five, we're down to three, and expending all the funds right now.
And there's a plan to keep three for the remainder of the year?
Correct.
All right, any other questions? All right, all in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Have a good night.
You, too.
All right, recorder, we have the quarter perpetuation fund, there's a transfer of $12,000 from data processing equipment to hourly, reason to provide necessary funding for hourly payroll. Motion. Motion. Is a second? Motion and a second for the transfer. Any questions? No? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign, transfer carries. All right, we'll go to...
You're welcome to sit.
Second reading, Madam Auditor. You can stick around. Hello, Vicki, second reading.
Reta, it has been determined that it's not necessary to appropriate more money than appropriated in the annual budget, therefore, we have resolved that Porter County, and Indiana, that for the essential cost, we manage to allocate an additional bunch of money, hereby appropriate out of county earnings, they present, subject to the mode of governing this thing, stormwater fund, 1182, $2,600, 1,265, out of the next week's budget.
Third, second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Get a roll call.
Councilman Paparazzi.
Yes.
Councilman Stinn.
Yes.
Councilman Ritten.
Yes.
Councilman Reva.
Yes.
Councilman Grant.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes.
And Councilman Larson.
Yes.
All right, so, any other matter? We did the resolution, so, Chuck, you wanna come and give us a quick spiel on what it is you're wanting to sell the farm for? Quick, Dan's puffing and puffing away.
I'm half.
Oh.
I don't know how you guys do it.
Are you afraid, Dan?
I can't wear these things.
I'm gonna make you.
Go ahead, just don't sneeze or cough. Get arrested.
All right. Basically, if you guys remember, when we were going through our budget stuff, I had mentioned two projects that we would like to get started with, they've been talked about here now for a couple of years, and I have been trying to get the first one started. It is our media conversion project that we are trying to do right now, and basically what that is, is we are taking all of our old books, the old paper books that are kind of, some of you guys have seen the books in the office.
I've seen them.
Yeah, and some of you have seen those, and they're kind of falling apart, and we're trying to digitize everything, not only with that, with the microfilm, and get everything in a digital format so people can actually look it up remotely. Now, we didn't have this planned to begin with, as far as the reason of reducing the foot traffic through the building, but once we get this media conversion taken care of, it's gonna greatly reduce the amount of traffic that we have coming into our office every day, because the people that are searching for things are gonna be able to search it online at home, and, so that's gonna make things safer here, it's just a, something that's kind of come of light here recently with COVID, but it is a selling point here. And, like I had mentioned earlier, we are using our perpetual fund for this project, and just to kind of give you a timeline of it, we're hoping, you know, four months or so, five months, we can get this knocked out, and it might be longer than that, but that's what our goal is right now. It's a pretty extensive project, it would include all of the books that are in our office, we have probably over 100 books down in the basement that are gonna be taken from the building and recorded, and...
What is gonna happen to those books then?
We're still keeping them, and it's just that they probably will never be used. Possibly they will still be used, but everything's gonna be a lot easier to look up on a computer in the comfort of your home, as you're sitting there in your pajamas, drinking an ice cold Coca-Cola.
Is it required to keep them, the books forever?
Yes. So, that's what we're planning on doing with the media conversion agreement. Now, I know that everybody's gonna look at that number.
What is that number?
That number is 676,000.
And that, in four months, you're gonna go through all that?
Yes. Now, we do have, and I'm sure Vicki could probably tell you what's in there, but it's...
$810,000.
I was gonna say right around 800, but 810 is more accurate. So, we do have the money to fund it, that's, and that's part of what we were saving that money up for a few minutes, when we were talking about the budget from last year, I mentioned the two projects, I told you that they were gonna be not small projects, they are expensive, I'm not trying to hide that fact.
Is that one company doing all?
Fiddler Company is taking care of, Fiddler Technologies is the name of the company, they're gonna be taking care of all that project.
So, they bring an army of people in to take the 100, is it 100 books?
That's just what's in the basement, we've got a lot of books.
How many total?
Oh, he was... Go ahead.
The scope of the project is on page two, let's see where's the book, if you didn't get a copy, I apologize, I can read it. The total books that they're gonna do, now, these are records, the reason there's so many, this is records from 1836 to 1979, 1961, sorry, a lot of records, okay, back to when our county became Ford County, and the scope of the books themselves is 738 books, there are microphone jackets, you can see there's 217 of those, index books, which are separate from records books, you have to look in the index book to find the record, which is the one above, that's 133, aperture cards are the way they recorded class, it's basically like a large negative, and there's 2,560 of those, so, there's, that's a lot of records.
Which will all be transferred into...
What they'll be done is, that's why the project lasts so long, they'll have, the company will come in and probably do all the scanning in a 24-hour period, they bring their own equipment in, they'll set up in our back room where the books are at, and they just go, and then they take all the product, all the data home, back to their office, and they follow the control, make sure everything looks clean, they can actually do the ice enhancement, it doesn't change the look of the records, clean it up, it's kind of like a photo shopping thing, in a way, but not adding or changing any data, and these are certified companies that do this work, they are, they're not nefarious companies, and then after they do that, they send us a first rep, we look at it, it's in a portable hard drive, we look at it, review the quality, and then it goes to a second revision, a second quality control check, and a third quality control check, and that's kind of why it takes so long, plus, they're gonna do some of the indexing for us, and that's the time saver, and that's why this project costs a little more. In the recorders world, book, records are like book and page, when you're looking for old records, you say, well, what book and pages, okay, and maybe D-book 100, page 500, okay? The, all these records are gonna be indexed with the appropriate indexing information, so we won't have to do as much indexing on our end, it'll already be done. It's a common practice, many counties who have done projects like this, this is pretty much the template for how it's done, and it's been very successful.
Why, what have we been doing over the last two, four, six, eight years in terms of doing this? Why such a big bite-all at one time?
Well, okay, the reason was, back around, I'm not sure the exact years, either 2014 or 15, our perpetuation fund was hurting badly, it was going down and down as far as balance. There were reasons for that, the grace and force side of the council, they assisted us by removing salaries from that perpetuation fund, and that has now helped us accumulate the money to the fund, and we need to do projects like this. When I was recorder, there was no way I could've done it, we just didn't have funds.
Small, small portions?
Can this be done in stages?
Well, it's being done in stages, but...
What I mean, can we do 100,000 a year for six years? And I'm assuming you have three prices on a project of this size?
There are only...
There's more than one company in this country.
There's only a couple vendors in the country that do this work, and we always, we work with our software vendor, that's why they use a company called US Imaging that comes in and does all this. But they, all the trans, all the contractual work is done through them.
Hey, John, what other communities, is there somebody else that we could reference that's done this?
I could get a list of names for you if you'd like.
I just was wondering to see what their end result was and, you know, how...
I'd be happy to get it for you. I'd be calling.
Well, back to my, can we do 100,000 a year, starting with the oldest and working our way forward? Because obviously, it's been this way for almost 200 years. So the big rush doesn't sit in front of me. Is there any reason we couldn't do it in stages? I'm just asking a question.
I think that we could do it in stages, I think it would cost us more in the long run. But to answer your question honestly, probably yes.
You know, I just, I mean, I'm not disputing the need, but the need has been here for 50 years.
True.
So all of a sudden, let's do it next week, doesn't, doesn't, you know, especially right now with the way the economy is, spending $600,000 on something that is needed but is not essential, may come back to haunt us in six, seven, eight months, 10 months, next year. I mean, casino revenue is going to be down, sales tax is going to be down, everybody's going to get cut. I mean, we just put a hiring freeze in. So I don't know if this is the appropriate time to spend over half a million dollars on something that has been sitting there for 50 years, or 60 or 100. That's all I mean. If this could be done gradually, I wouldn't be, you know, I'm just throwing that out.
What percentage of those books, John, are in the position where we're losing some of the information on them? Because there's an acidic problem, right?
There is a whole issue, as time goes on, I mean, as the ink, there's acid in the ink or acid in the paper.
Right.
I'd say 20%, it's a pretty good estimate, you know.
Is that the oldest stuff?
Yeah.
Some of it's the oldest stuff.
Yeah, should that where we start? I mean...
Right.
How is the oldest stuff, tell me again? How is this the oldest?
1836, the day that we became Porter County.
That was Dick's first term.
So if it was 20%, that's like between 130 and 150,000 dollars?
I guess my question would be, you know, not that Bob's not on the right track, but before I would go further down that track, I would be curious to know if we did it over a longer period of time, how much more would that cost us? Because we're not, we're no strangers on this board to taking the big buy to reduce the long-term cost, we've done that before. So I guess that's, if we know that inevitably we're going to have to do it, and we know that if we stretch it out over six years, it's going to cost us 800,000, for example. Those are the kind of...
I think we, didn't you at one time have where you were going to do so much a year?
Yeah, I thought...
Was it, or was that, was that microfilming?
I can't speak for anything from 2011, that's why I became recorder, but we never had any place, we just couldn't afford to do it, bottom line, couldn't afford to do it.
And we've saved up the money now, where we have that, I mean, it's like we don't have to create any more money to pay for this, we've, we've saved for it, we have it there in our account, and it's only, as you guys know, I mean, it keeps getting added to each month, and so we feel very comfortable with it and still being able to operate as we do. I guess my biggest concern is having them come here one time versus having them come here six different times, but I can also appreciate Bob's...
Well, I got, I want to circle back to that.
Okay.
John, you made the comment, they're going to come in here in 24 hours and open up 700 books and scan every page in 24 hours?
That's, well, I'm just...
Am I, did I hear that right?
That was the original plan.
I mean, is that even fair?
Physical books, that's not the microphone.
No, but talk about the books, are physically going to open up 700 books and take out each page and scan them?
They bring in a team of, I don't know, 10 or 12 people with high-speed documents, document scanners, and they get them.
I mean, that's physically possible?
Impossible.
I mean, that's what they do.
They're dealing with old books.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the page...
They do share, they... Well, these are not novice companies, so, I mean, I can find out the exact...
I'm just thinking, how many pages are in a book?
600.
Yeah, they're thick.
So we're talking 42,000 pages they're going to scan and take apart in 24 hours? I mean, I just, I'm just thinking, you know...
Well, even if it takes them five days to do it, I mean, it's still the same cost.
Correct, correct, I'm just saying...
It's kind of amazing what they do.
Yeah.
Is the book still left intact afterwards, or is it...
Yes.
Whatever they do in the books, they put them back together.
They put them back together?
Vicky, what's our budget? Approved budget for this fund?
Approved. The approved budget for...
Perpetuation.
It's more a question of how much will be taken out of it. Yeah.
We know what's...
I guess my, I guess the urgency of it doesn't affect me, that's all. I mean, I'm not saying the price is good, the price is bad, I'm not saying anything. The urgency has been here for longer than we've all been alive. Now, it doesn't seem like the timing. And, you know, to follow that up, I mean, there couldn't be a worse time for the county to talk about a huge expenditure out of any account, frankly. I mean, I, it seems like it would make sense to investigate what Bob's suggesting, to say, can we do it over, over stages and will that exorbitantly affect the ultimate cost? You know, that's certainly a, you know, certainly a consideration, I think it sounds as if, if we haven't already done so, to get the, if there's only two vendors, then if we haven't talked to the second vendor, we probably should, to see what their cost is, it might be a lot less, it might, you know, it might be something that would be a little bit more palatable. But in terms of large expenditures, any municipality in the state or in the country, I think it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough time to sell. How old is this price?
We got it in the fall of last year.
Okay, so that's pre-COVID. I have a feeling that they're not, a lot of municipalities are beating down their door right now to spend money, might get a whole lot better price. Because everybody's in the same situation we are, whether it be a city, a town, the state, whatever. I mean, municipalities ain't running around spending large amounts of money on something that's needed but not essential. I mean... And kind of a side question I'd have is, are there other departments within the county that need to do the same sort of thing that, hey, we haven't heard about, or the courts, do they need...
They've been...
Are they up to date or are they back to 1836 too? I mean...
I don't think nobody's behind, they're the oldest.
And if there is a department that might have the similar sort of need, maybe we could bring them in, and if you pull, you know, put the package together in terms of what needs to be done, that might drive down the cost.
There's still books at the highway?
Mike, I'm sorry.
Is there still books at the highway department?
Yes, see, that's the problem, our books are strictly proprietary to the recorder's office. It's not like we're getting a general contractor come in and just bookstake. Then, your idea is a good idea, if it was something like that, if we were just going to PDF them or make them into a format that's universal, it would fit all the offices. Ours aren't. All this data is going to be digitized and it's going to be uploaded into our live system, so then it's searchable through our software, our software is not, not used in any other office, so it's a kind of proprietary setup. Going back to clerk's office, I think, I believe, if I remember, few years back, well, maybe, it's more, it's more than 10 years ago, they had everything digitized by a company named Information Records Association out of South Bend, I don't know what happened to their stuff, if it's still done, I don't know if they've done anything since 2006 or '07.
And resurrect it, that might help everybody better understand what that means or what the price should be, or, you know, it might be some value into looking at that.
Do you still use the books today?
Yeah, we have it. Our digital records go back to late 1979, so we've got about 41 years in the hopper of digital. But yeah, for example, today, we have appointments that we honor, and people came in and we had them in masks, take their temperature and have their gloves, and they look through books, put gloves on.
So you digitize going forward, you have been digitizing?
We've been digitized, well, we did, we started with a system, I believe the office, I shouldn't say week because I wasn't on here then, I was the sheriff's office, but around 1990 we started.
Okay.
And what they did was, they did a back, a backstanding project at that time, and they backed, they got images going from about 1989 always back to 1974. And we've been progressively, slow but sure, indexing those images, that's the key, you get the indexes, like you can search, otherwise you got to punch it...
You'll never find them.
So we've been working on that, and so now we're going back from 70 into 73, all the way back to 1836, I still like to do that. I'm sorry, we have images, it's like taking pictures, putting them in a folder, they're all, they're all labeled, image one, image two, image three, we're actually going from 61.
So I think there's still a lot, a lot of questions, this is a large request, obviously you guys know that, so there seems to be some questions that still need answered, so I think, you guys, you know, I don't know...
I'd really be curious to see how much it is if we, if we, if we budget $100,000 a year for six years, see how far they could get, starting with the oldest, working their way forward.
I can ask him.
Yeah?
That's not a problem, I can do that.
Do we run a table at that?
Well, there's nothing to vote on, I got to refresh our memories and bring, you know, in front.
That's good.
It wasn't, it wasn't put on for a vote, so just kind of give us a quick presentation, refresh us, and, you know, now, let's follow up with questions, let's make sure we follow up, we need a moment of questions, get some answers, and we'll move forward.
All right.
Good, guys.
One other thing I wanted to throw out there at you guys, I told you that anytime that we were spending money from the RPF, that I'd let you guys know about it.